Is 818-548-2140. That evening, another town hall meeting will be hosted by the Glendale Police Department relating to the South Command area. It takes place at the Pacific Park Community Center at 6:30 PM. Details are available at 818-548-3140. That same evening, the Community Services and Parks Department will hold a public meeting regarding the 2011-2012 Annual Plan. This meeting takes place in the Sycamore Room at the Pacific Park Community Center and begins at 7:00 PM. The entire family is welcome and there will be activities provided to entertain the kids. If you have questions, call 818-548-2060. And mark your calendars for two very special events taking place on Saturday, March 26th. From 1:00 to 4:00 PM, the community is invited to celebrate the birthday of Cesar Chavez at Pacific Edison Elementary School. The festivities will feature guest speaker Amy Navarette and entertainment. A free lunch will be served from 1:00 to 2:30. For more details, visit the city's website at www.ciglendale.ca.us and click on the link, "What's Hot." Also on March 26th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, Glendale Police will square off against Glendale Fire in a charity basketball game at Glendale High School. Proceeds benefit the Salvation Army's food pantry. For more information, call 818-246-5588. The city is currently seeking sponsorships for two special events that are taking place in the next few weeks. If you would like to offer assistance with the Mans and Humanity Demand Event on April 17th or the Armenian Genocide Commemoration on April 25th, please contact Zizette Mullins at 818-548-4844. We'd like to hear your thoughts about how Glendale can be greener. Fill out the online survey at www greenerglendale.org. That's it for this time. Thanks for joining us and we'll see you next week.
Did you know that Glendale alone investigated six traffic-related deaths last year? The majority of these incidents involve pedestrians hitting crosswalks. Through engineering, education, and enforcement, the city of Glendale wants to inform the public of the dangers of distracted driving and to encourage vigilance while crossing the street. If you're driving, don't be driven to distraction. And if you're walking, look to live.
I vote because I want my kids to pull in a safe neighborhood.
I vote because I want a clean environment.
I vote because I care about our schools.
I vote because I believe in public safety.
I vote because I care about the economy.
I vote because this is my first election.
I vote because it's my civic duty.
There are many reasons to vote, but not a single reason why you shouldn't. A message from the City Clerk Elections Division.
Are you? Community Emergency Response Training is free. Call the Glendale Fire Department at 818-548-6404 to find out how you can sign up for the next free cert class.
돌아오는 선거에 본인 집에서 참가하여 투표를 하신다면, 투표권은 신청서를 붙이신 후 1~2주 안에 우편으로 받으실 겁니다. 투표하실 때 검정 아니면 짙은색의 불펜으로 선택하신 후보자의 오른쪽에 있는 동그라미를 완전히 칠하시면 됩니다. 시위의 후보자는 2명, 교육위원회 후보자도 2명, 대학 보드와 매저 S도 2명을 선택하실 수 있습니다. 투표를 하신 후에 투표권 스트랩을 뜯으신 다음 투표권을 비밀봉투에 넣으십시오. 그 다음 그 봉투를 반송봉투 안에 넣으십시오. 반송보트 뒷면에 필요한 내용을 다 적으시고 사인하신 다음 C로 붙이십시오. 질문이 있으시면 818-548-4000으로 전화하시면 됩니다. 당신의 투표가 하나하나 중요합니다.
Did I hear somebody say we weren't through yet? We haven't played enough music, huh? Is that it? Hit 'em, Adam. Is that alright with you?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have some carryover business from this afternoon, so I'm gonna re-call to order the Glendale Housing Authority meeting and go to my colleague, Authority Member Friedman, for a motion.
Thank you. I would like to move that the city attorney and outside counsel Brooke Williams and Sorenson are hereby authorized to initiate litigation by filing a petition seeking compliance with the legislative subpoenas issued by the housing authority to the receiver for Advanced Development and Investment, Inc., ADI, Pacific Housing Diversified, Inc., PHD. Said subpoenas pertain to four development projects at 1860 Garden Avenue, 328 Miraloma Avenue, 3673 San Fernando, and 1814 Vassar Avenue. The projects. The city attorney and outside counsel are further authorized to oppose, whether by intervention, jointure, or other appropriate action, the motion brought by the respondent in the case of Karimi versus Milhewala, case number BD-518503, which requests a court order prohibiting the disclosure to the housing authority of forensic reports prepared by Crowe Horwath pertaining to the projects. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matters.
Second. Second roll call, please, for the authority.
Authority members Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Mincy. Brazian. Weaver.
Hi.
Chair Quintero. Acting Chair Najarian.
Yes. Turn motion to adjourn the authority.
So moved.
Second. The authority is adjourned. And I would like to call to order the March 22nd, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Currently, council members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Weaver. Here.
Chair Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Weaver, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, just as for all.
Please remain standing for the reading of this invocation for this evening. This coming Saturday, the city will recognize Cesar Chavez Day with a special event. Cesar Chavez was a community organizer and civil rights activist who drew the world's attention to the plight of migrant farmworkers through the means of peaceful protest and boycotts. I recall as a child not having grapes on our family table as a sign of my parents' solidarity with his cause during their college years. In speaking about the cause for which he advocated, he said, "We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about progress and prosperity for our community. Our ambitions must be broad enough to include the aspirations and needs of others for their sakes and for our own. It is in the spirit of inclusiveness and the struggle for human dignity that we pray this evening. As the campaigns of many of our candidates reach full pitch with elections around the corner, we pray that our personal goals be synchronized with those of our greater community, our neighbors, our children, our seniors, and so many other stakeholders of our wonderful city of Glendale. Amen."
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the March 22nd, 2011 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March 17th, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Next is presentation appointments. That's 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of March 29th, 2011.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the housing authority commencing at 2:30, we have two business agenda items. First is Director of Community Services and Parks, recommendation to approve the Salvation Army as the new project sponsor for the homeless childcare program formerly operated by New Horizons. Secondly, we have Director of Community Development, and this is regarding Doran Gardens Affordable Housing Project Marketing Plan. In the afternoon, for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we have a number of business agenda items. Director of Community Development regarding Los Angeles Times Series Downtown Art and Entertainment District Events. Director of Community Development regarding bid results for the Alex Theater Front Faisade Restoration Project in connection with spec. R-41. Director of Community Development, this is regarding branding of the San Fernando Road Corridor Redevelopment Project area. We do have a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, public hearing. This is Director of Community Development regarding Wilson, Maryland Lofts Project, which is located at 111 East Wilson Avenue and 215 North Maryland Avenue. For the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Director of Public Works, citywide bike racks. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, software development upgrades and program services for continuous emission monitoring system and data acquisition and handling system at the Grayson Power Plant. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is the additional funding for the Foothill Rehabilitation and Facilities Project in connection with spec. 3334. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is a grant application to the California Department of Food and Agriculture for Specialty Crop Block Grant Program Funds for fiscal year 2011 through 2014, and this is to provide specialty crops to nutritional meals participants. Continuing on with consent items, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding pump control valves and isolation valves for the repair of Glorieta Park Pump Station. Chief of Police, this is regarding the Glendale Burbank City Jail Temporary Consolidation Agreement. And lastly, for consent items, we have General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the purchase of four existing office trailers to be used as interim office space at the Utility Operations Center for Glendale Water and Power. And lastly, we have a number of adoption of ordinances. The first one is ordinance amending certain sections of the Glendale Municipal Code, creating the position of Chief Assistant Director of Community Development. Ordinance amending and adding various sections to Title 30 of the GMC relating to parking amendments. Ordinance adding sections to Title 1 of the GMC, and this is relating to issuance of administrative citations for specified violations of Title 30. And lastly, we have an ordinance for introduction authorizing the city manager to execute a 15-year lease with the Museum of Neon Art. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, at 3B is a proclamation designating March 2011 as Cesar Chavez Month.
Thank you. Ms. Mullins.
Good evening, Mayor and Najarian Council Members. I'm here to invite everyone to come out to Pacific Community Center on Saturday at 1:00 from 1:00 to 4:00. We're holding our 10th Annual Cesar Chavez Event, and this is to commemorate his leadership and the work that he has done with the farmers. The event is going to include performance from Edison Pacific School, flamenco dancers. We're going to have mariachis. We're going to have Cerritos Elementary School performing as well. The most exciting thing is we're going to have free tacos from 1:00 to 2:30, so we hope that the public come out and enjoy a beautiful day, and it will not rain on Saturday. That's the exciting news, so we got lucky. Right now, I'd like to introduce Alicia Widmeyer from the Glendale Latino Association. This year, we're fortunate to have our guest speakers Amy Navarta with the Glendale Latino Association, and Alicia's here on behalf of the association to receive the proclamation from the city council.
Thank you. Please come forward and let me read the proclamation. Whereas Cesar Chavez, founder and president of the United Farm Workers of America, was born on March 31st, 1927, and passed away at the age of 66 on April 22nd, 1993; and whereas Cesar Chavez joined the US Navy in 1945 and served in the Western Pacific in World War II; and whereas Cesar Chavez was a charismatic leader who conveyed hope and determination, especially to minority workers in their daily struggle against prejudice, injustice, and hardship; and whereas Cesar Chavez inspired an entire generation of Americans to participate in social and civic affairs and motivated many to answer the call to public service; and whereas Cesar Chavez dedicated his life to the improvement of farmworker employment and living conditions, sacrificing his own health and putting himself in harm's way in order to stop the exploitation of farmworkers. His struggles for the cause of justice raised the social consciousness of the American labor movement; and whereas Cesar Chavez was one of this nation's most dynamic and effective spokespersons in the environmental and consumer movement against the heavy application of dangerous pesticides on food products; and whereas the commitment of Cesar Chavez to nonviolence and advocating change was consistent with the principles of a democratic society and serves as a heroic role model for others to follow. Now therefore, I, a Najarian Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim the month of March 2011 as Cesar Chavez Month in remembrance of his life, values, sacrifices, and the inspiration that his actions have had on the lives of so many.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Widmeyer.
Thank you. On behalf of Glendale Latino Association, I want to thank you for this honor, to have this certificate and the pleasure to receive that. It's the effort of this group also that work with the community. Amy Navarette is so happy to speak in that group, okay, and to be part of that, okay? I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll see everyone on Saturday at 1:00 at Pacific Park. A lot of fun, a lot of good food, music, great time to get together to commemorate the life of Cesar Chavez. Next item, please.
Next item, the city council and staff comments.
Mr. Weaver.
For once, rare time, I have a couple items. One, I thought staff was working on, but I guess they weren't. I watch Animal Planet quite often, and I see what happens to dogs, cats that are abused, whatever. And I've seen plenty of puppy mills reels, what happens in puppy mills. And I understand we have at least one store in Glendale that does sell puppy mill dogs. The humane societies are loaded with adoptable animals. I'd like to put on the agenda discussion about allowing puppy mills in Glendale. Many other cities have done the same thing.
I will join Mr. Weaver in that.
Okay. And a second thing. Friday, last Friday, there was an article written in the Glendale News Press, which I took a little exception with. I called the news press and said, "In the past, after council candidates pull their papers to run or filed, that no editorials will be written through the election period." But Mike Moheil was granted the right to white one last Friday, so I called the news press and asked, "I'd like to submit one too, just to see what they say." They said, "Well, it might not be published because of the deadline doing this, two and a half weeks before the election, and there's a deadline." So I asked, "Once a deadline, the responsible person of the news press says he didn't know he would have to check on that." Which if you don't know, when you're the person in command or in control of that, you don't know, I'm surprised. But the other thing, in that article, three times it accused this council and the housing authority members of meeting with ADI in private in closed door. I told him that was a lie. We never did. He told me they verified it. Don't know who, but he said he verified it. I told him, "You call the city manager, any other official in this town, and see if anyone agrees with that assertion." It says it's a flat-out lie, and you're liable to get a lawsuit thrown on the Glendale News Press for not doing your homework. The next day, in a little squirrely article in the back, they said they made a mistake that indeed staff met with the council or the housing authority. It was not ADI. And it's really perturbing when our own paper can't get the story straight. And for what it's worth, anybody out there that's had my yard signs stolen, give me a call and I'll replace them. This campaign is really getting dirty, stealing signs again, you know? So please, if you did, call me and I'll try to get another copy out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, two items. One is, and these are both for Public Works, I think. One is an inquiry I had from Cheyenne Wilbur related to an ongoing issue related to a city sewer line, I believe, and a removal of a city tree. And apparently, the city is making a distinction as to whether the tree roots broke the pipe or whether the tree, before they chopped it, before the city took it out, caused the problem. Anyway, I'm gonna pass along the contact information. Can we sit down at the meeting before we pursue action against this individual and see if we can work something out here? The other item is a little more, well, it relates to the arts, was a contact from Judy Ferris, who has been running around the city from department to department to department, Mr. Mayor, trying to find a place, an appropriate Mayor, trying to find a place, an appropriate place, for students and young people to display art in one of our public settings, and has been striking out at at least half a dozen venues that the city has recommended for a variety of reasons. I know that we have city venues where we can display art, so I'm going to pass her number along also. Let's see if we can get some movement on that. We're a council that's supposed to have embraced the notion of the arts, and we have done that pretty substantially, I think.
Let's give that one to my office.
We'll give that to your office. Mr. Starbird is feeling more artistic than the public work.
The culture resides in management services.
I see, is that where it is? Okay, okay. Will do. So we can get some answers out to them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman.
I wanted to talk about an event I attended last week, but Mr. Drayman reminded me about that email, and I just wanted to go a little step further with his comment, which was that we do get these inquiries from time to time from various arts groups, whether they're local painting clubs or schools, and maybe we can come up with some sort of policy of a few places that we can display art in public, whether it's the Adult Recreation Center or the lobby of City Hall or wherever it is.
Central Library.
Or the Central Library, and let's come up with a policy of how we evaluate that and make that happen.
Community Services and Parks has been working on a policy.
Great, I'm glad to hear it, and I look forward to seeing it come back. So last week on Thursday, I attended an event that I was very pleased to have been able to bring to Glendale. I found out a few months ago that Metropolitan Water District, on whose board I represent Glendale, from time to time has offered a program that is a program for small and local businesses to teach them how to contract with government agencies. Government agencies, almost all of them have requirements or targets of contracting a certain percentage of their projects with small business. Metropolitan actually has a requirement that twenty percent of their contracting is with local and small businesses. So this was a way of reaching out to the local community here. We were able to organize an event that had a lot of the public agencies in the area, not just Glendale Water and Power, but also LA's DWP, Pacific Edison, many of the large agencies in the area got together, and we invited the local community, and we had two hundred slots, and when we hit two hundred, we decided to open it up a little bit more, and we sold out at two hundred and fifty. It was a wonderful event, extremely well-attended. It was free to the attendees, and they had a very valuable half a day, learning about the opportunities with public agencies, what the requirements are, how you register, and they also got to network not only with each other, but with all of the representatives from all of those agencies. So I was very happy to see that come to Glendale, and I particularly want to thank our staff, who were wonderful, particularly our redevelopment department and Ken Hicks, who worked with Metropolitan and made this a very successful event. And I also want to acknowledge the business owners who took the time out of their busy schedules to attend and to be proactive in terms of bettering their businesses. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to have brought before the council a, perhaps a discussion on the role of our different commissions and make sure that we all have the same understanding as to what, how far their authority extends into different areas. I know part of it's charter, part of it's ordinance, and we may want to review that and make sure that the expectations of commissioners as well as the expectations of the public and this council are in line with their currently delineated roles. Someone would support me in that?
I will.
Thank you.
On that, my office will work with city attorney's office.
The seven-ten freeway scoping meetings are continuing. It has taken the next step towards becoming a reality. There's one this evening, if I'm not mistaken, at Glendale College, but tomorrow, there is going to be one held at South Pasadena. I think it's the library, if I'm not mistaken. I just got a email from our transportation director. Yes, tomorrow is in South Pasadena, I think it's the, oh, here it is. I had an iPad, I could probably read it, but I'm just stuck on a little BlackBerry. Hint, hint. Anyway, there's going to be a meeting at South Pasadena. It's important that all of us get involved and make our opinions known regarding this project. This thing is rolling forward like nothing else, and the, you know, the consultants are enjoying every minute of this, and the engineers, no offense, Mr. Weaver, are really looking forward to many years of full employment, when whether this is good for the community has really become a secondary issue. So I encourage everyone to keep an eye out, tomorrow at South Pasadena Public Library, there will be an outreach meeting. Any comments from staff? Mr. Kusakian.
Mayor and council, just another reminder that April 5th, 2011, is the date for a municipal election. Two seats up for consideration by the voters for council, two seats up for the college board, two more for the school board, as well as Measure S, very important measure, up for the consideration of the voters of Glendale. It is past the deadline to be able to register to vote if one wishes to vote in this election. That deadline was yesterday. However, there's still time to request a ballot to be able to vote from home. If anyone chooses to vote by mail, they can do so by making such requests before March 29th. March 29th is the deadline for that, after which they can go to the polls, or in extreme circumstances, they may appear in person at the Election Center at 131 North Isabel and make a request for a vote-by-mail ballot at that time. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. I'd like to go back to my comments, and thanks to Ms. Friedman for letting me read the attachment on her wonderful iPad device. The meeting for the seven-ten tunnel is going to be tomorrow evening, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at South Pasadena High School Auditorium, 1401 Fremont Avenue in South Pasadena. Anyone interested, please be sure to attend. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on.
Next on the agenda is consent items, including minutes following the routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I have a request to pull items 5D and 5I. Mr. Weaver.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar at five.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council members, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Caro. Weaver.
Aye.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes. 5D, please.
5D is a fire chief regarding destruction of fire department records. At D1 is resolution approving destruction of certain city records.
Okay. I have a card here from Herbert Milano.
City Harold. Yeah, there is chiefs here.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. As I was looking at these details concerning the destruction of personnel files prior to the year 2005, I came to mind that for the past ten years, I've, on records that I have requested through the California Public Records Act, it shows that the combined safety employees of fire and police, when they have retired, nearly fifty percent of them have retired on disability. My concern is that in case in the future, a future city council may want to review or investigate the reason for the high number of employees who retire on a disability, then maybe these records may not be available. I'm suggesting perhaps that you can get a clarification that in case such a study is made for the whole decade, that these records remain in place so that we can properly assess why it is that so many employees, either fire and police, are retiring on disability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Pull 5D.
For a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Caro. Weaver.
Aye.
Najarian.
Yes. 5I, please.
5I is Director of Information Services and General Manager of GWP regarding development of functional and technical requirements, assistance in development of three requests for proposals, and assistance in review and evaluation of responding proposals for the smart grid project. I1 is motion approving an agreement with Utility Integration Solutions, Inc. in the amount of $160,000.
I have a card from Mark Olson.
Honorable Mayor, city staff, community, Mark Olson, Southern California Edison. I just wanted to provide some information to you, which you have, about our Edison and our smart projects with the smart grid, including the smart meter, including our new transmission and smart transmission for wind and solar access, and work we're doing with plug-in electric vehicles that are now hitting the market and providing charging stations. As you know, most all of the customers in Glendale are with city power, but there's a small section that is Southern California Edison provided because it was annexed in, and so we will work with those customers if they want electric vehicles in that community. Also, we are working with your staff to look at the potential of transferring those customers that are in Glendale that we serve into your community, and so we're happy to do that through our franchise review. But again, it's just an informational item. Thank you.
We were just wondering, just wondering whether your comments were addressing the particular item at 5I, but...
The smart, the smart grid?
Well, this is actually just a contract for development of RFPs on one component of smart grids.
Right. Okay, but anyway.
I'm just giving you information on what we're doing with our smart grid. I'm not supporting or opposing what you're doing, but just giving you more information.
So probably would have been under oral communications in general.
In any event, thank you for coming forth. Mr. Weaver.
Pull file I1.
For a second. Roll call, please.
Council members, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Caro. Weaver.
Aye.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next item is oral communications. This will be the three-minute announcement portion for community announcements.
Thank you. The first speaker is Karine Arman.
Hello, I'm Karine Arman. I'm a teacher at Glendale Public Schools, and I also do photography, but a month ago, I published a book. It's a self-help book, positive thinking, spiritual. My mom wrote the articles twenty-two years ago, and she died twenty years ago, so I translated them into English. I have added some of my own writings, my grandmother's story, which she escaped the army and genocide, walked to Iran. So, and then there are some photos, makes it a semi-memoir. And this next Saturday, Arc Family Center has organized a book presentation celebration event, so I would like to invite everybody. It's on Saturday, March 26th, which is my mom's birthday also, at four o'clock, four to six, it's reception. So we'll have a ten-minute presentation at 4:30, and Dr. Kudaaviryan and Melina Sardar have been very supportive, they organized the event for me. It's at 135 South Jackson Street, 102, just a block away, so everybody's invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, I think you're all together, Ginny Kim, Min Young Hu, Thomas Higge, Julie Kim. Leon's not in this group, are you, Leon?
Again, good evening, Mayor and council members. We, the members of Global Debates, are students from Glendale District and Lockinara District who have met and trained as debate students under New Hope Academy and are excited to head into 2010-11 year of public discussion and around critical international issues to exchange views and develop courses of action to combat its impacts. The Global Debates is a worldwide project initiated by the United Nations Foundation and runs as a partnership with International Debate Education Association and National Forensic League. We are a group of young people who believe that current affairs are a shared common, common, shared responsibility. We believe that it's not just world leaders, elected officials who can make a difference, but the students and the educators who can, who are instrumental in making this change by activating their peers and communities to take action. Thus, we four students are currently visiting Southern California's major cities in order to better learn and research the effects and impacts of migration. We wanted to begin by thanking Glendale City Council members for supporting us through our fall semester, and it was through your guidance and support that we were able to make it to first place internationally, and as a small token of appreciation, we got small treats.
Michael, you can't keep those.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Min Young. The fall semester was a foundational introduction into the current circumstances of immigration all around the world. We researched and learned about the difficulties numerous countries and migrants are facing, some that we constantly hear about and some that we had never encountered or heard of before. We had the privilege of participating in and organizing numerous community service events such as a multicultural blood drive and joining the International Rescue Committee to make Christmas more enjoyable for refugees around the world. We learned extremely interesting aspects of about our community and their neighborhoods closest to us. For instance, Tahanka has one of the largest refugee population from countries such as Iran, and the refugee population continues to grow. A community is defined by its people. Hence, by extracting the opinions of the community, we can best understand what the people want and how they want to be treated. Throughout the spring semester, the Global Debates New Hope team will be interacting with the community in various ways. The Global students began by interviewing business owners and community members on the various aspects of diversity and the continuously growing immigrant population. We plan to further our research through meeting with lawyers specializing in immigration policies and learning from leaders such as ourselves on the various issues that continue to impact the major cities of Southern California. By doing so, we hope to learn and discover what methods would be the most effective to further our research and understanding our local community's perspective on international migration and how to better serve our young leaders.
True, in this globalized world, regulations are not perfect. Some enter the border under illegal circumstances, while others wait numerous years and invest innumerable finances to become illegal immigrant of a new country. Oversaturation becomes a prominent issue, and simply widely opening the doors to all is not the wisest option to both immigrants and non-immigrants. However, as we can witness through the events we encounter, such as the horrific disaster in Japan, we must become a unified international community. We, the members of the Global Debates, plan to thoroughly research the foundations and details on the influence of international immigrants, devise ways to minimize harms of globalization, and maximize the goods of multiculturalism. We will combine and gather all the research and knowledge gained throughout the semester and hold a second public debate to raise awareness of the circumstances at hand. However, we will not stop simply at raising awareness, but will strive to make significant strides in improving and protecting the community. As second-generation immigrants ourselves, we have received much, but have also seen our parents' generation's struggles. We hope to bridge the gap as we learn to link our past and present to push for a better future. We want to actively give back to our community and also guide others in the process. Thus, we ask once again for your guidance and support, whether it's through suggestions or teaching us how to proceed, we would be extremely grateful. We, as students and future leaders, will continue to push forward to become exemplary members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I thank you for the treats. We don't deserve them, but thank you for the kind thoughts. And Ms. Friedman.
I just wanted to say that it's wonderful to see you all here today. I had the pleasure of attending one of your debates last year, and I was so incredibly impressed with all of you and everyone who was up on that stage. They were discussing international affairs with such a breadth of knowledge that it was really incredible to see. So I just want to compliment you on not just coming here tonight, but certainly on the work that you're doing and the amount of learning that you're doing and contributions that you're making to the community here, but also the international community. I know that you really are going beyond what many young people do today, so congratulations, and thank you so much for representing Glendale and making us so proud.
Thank you. And in either first or second week of April, we will be holding another public debate, and so as we confirm our date and the time and the place, we will email you and, you know, so that you could also attend the one, the ones that's coming up. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Also, a quick note, is there any service or like community service events that we can partake that relate... Is there any service or community service events that we can partake that relates to as high school students that relate to migration and international migration?
We haven't any international migration events in Glendale. You know what? We certainly have community volunteer opportunities, and we can, if you send me another email, I'm happy to put you in touch with the right people at the city and maybe find something for you to get involved with at the city.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Leon, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Glendale Library. I'd like to, first of all, remind you, last Thursday, we had Susan Straight, nationally-known writer, professor of creative writing at University of California, Riverside. And I'd like to read an email that Chuck White, our Community Relations Director, sent to Mrs. Barbara Berent, Glendale Unified, who's school district high school teacher at Glendale High. Dear Miss Berent, on behalf of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library and the Glendale Public Library, I want to thank you for sending your modern literature students to the library on March 17th to enjoy a lecture with author Susan Straight. We must have had two classes. There had to be 65, 70 kids there. They seemed to have a great time listening to Susan, who thankfully was a high-energy speaker. I hope they'll come back soon to another event because Susan Straight would like to come back again, too. Leon Mayer, our Friends VP for Community Events, wanted me to let you know that seeing so many high school students at our event makes him, that's me, want to work that much harder on these events. He said your kids made our events a success in many ways, not just in attendance, but in who he's trying to reach with our authors. How did you hear about that event, he asked, and so forth? And there was a PS sign, Chuck White, Community Relations Director, Glendale Public Library. PS, we have a great author coming up on Wednesday, May 4, 7:00 PM, who might be of interest to our students. And that author is Lisa Napoli. She'll be there May 4. She's written a book, Radio Shangri-La and What I Learned in Bhutan, The Happiest Kingdom on Earth. I'll talk about this later, but this is going to be a great event in its own right, and we'll hopefully attract more than high school journalists, teachers, I mean, students, but also people who remember Shangri-La with Ronald Coleman about 50 years ago. It was a famous movie. Also, we're having on April 21st, to be a little more provincial, we're having the director of the USC Marching Band, Dr. Arthur Bartner. He's been 40 years as a director of USC Marching Band. He's written a book called The Man on the Ladder. I'll talk more about this later because we have time to do it next week and the week after. That'll be Thursday, April 21st, 7:00. And I have flyers for anybody who wants them as I leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
He's got me hooked now.
Okay. Save a spot for Mr. Weaver. Next item, please. This will conclude this portion of Oral Communications.
Under Action Items, 8A is Director of Community Development and of Public Works Regarding Potential Code Amendments Relates to New Regulations for Pedestrian Creative and Political Campaigning Signs. At 8A1 is Motion Authorizing Initiation of Code Amendments.
Yes, we'll go to Mr. Hagani.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is just to initiate, although there is some draft language that we have attached, this is simply to initiate the code amendment process, which will include meetings with stakeholders and the Planning Commission, and coming back with these three types of signs that we are introducing in the Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code and other places where it applies to the public right of way.
Okay. This is the kickoff, then?
That's just the kickoff.
I don't have any cards. Is there a motion?
Actually, I have a question.
Yes?
We're not going to have a presentation. My question, I read this all very carefully, and I am in support of this ordinance and these changes, but I did have a question in regards to the signs being able to be sort of in front of businesses on their property. What happens in the situation of like a strip mall? Are they allowed to put a bunch of signs, all not right in front of their businesses, but on the other side of the parking lot along the street?
That's a very good question. We haven't considered strip malls. The only thing we've been, we're focusing on were signs in a specified merchants association. The ones that I can think of don't have very many of the strip malls, Montrose, Kenneth Village, Spar Heights. So where you typically see the strip malls, Colorado, Glen Oaks, South Central, they're not in a merchants association, so they wouldn't be eligible under the current proposal.
Right, and I was thinking about that, but I think that there actually might be a few in some of those areas.
So we'll have to evaluate that as part of the development process and see how we're going to deal with that and...
So can we maybe take a look at that and just have some kind of a way of preventing 10 signs from being in that little narrow strip of grass?
If I may, currently, what we have for strip malls is that they have to apply for a sign program, so most likely, we will require that to be part of their sign program if they're going to have anything in the public right of way. That would be out of the ordinary, and we will address that. Thank you for raising it.
Then one last question. I did read the report, and I thought I read it carefully, but I didn't see, and I'm sorry if I just missed it, the part about the changes to political signs. So can you just maybe briefly?
All we're proposing at this time is to sort of suspend the current language in the code because legal issues have risen as to how, whether or not we can really enforce them as currently enacted. So we're proposing to suspend the language and evaluate more carefully with the city attorney's office what the legal ramifications are, what the regulatory issues are, and what rules we may or may not be able to apply.
So by suspending the current code, what would that allow that's not allowed now?
Perhaps I can answer that. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Friedman, the language related to political signs in residential zones has been administratively suspended for some years. In the past, we regulated political signs. We allowed only one per residence, and in our view, that's unconstitutional. There's been a number of cases out of different circuits, as well as some cases in California that tried to walk that tightrope between the First Amendment and the need to eliminate or reduce or minimize sign clutter in residential zones. Commercial zones, we haven't suspended the requirements. They're treated like any other sign. We don't regulate the content, so if somebody has enough sign area or enough frontage, they want to put up a vote-for-me sign, three of them in their window, they can certainly do that. The language that's been suspended relates only to residential zones. And so if somebody today wanted to put up 10 signs in their front yard, they would be permitted to do so, and say they can vote for whatever they want.
So now a business would be able to cover their entire window in political signs if they want to?
Not a bit, only up to 25%.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Son, I just want to make sure, like you're saying, one pedestrian sign, but if they were on a corner and had two sides, could they, and if they have a large frontage, 100 feet or more, could they have more than one? It's just something...
At this point, we're only proposing one sign per business, but we're sure that that'll come up in our discussions with the community, and we'll address that.
And the last thing, or second to the last, they can only be used in a commercial district or in a merchant association area. Does that cover all areas like Foothill? Does it cover West Glen Oaks, South Brand? Does it cover all those areas?
As we're proposing it currently, it doesn't, because one reason that we are proposing it that way is that we need to have a body of people that can help the city administer this and maintain a certain level of quality, and without having an association or some sort of a recognized group that we can work with, that'll become a code enforcement issue for us. So at this point, we're proposing it this way. If it expands, we will present that to you when we come back.
I just make sure that it's not being discriminatory, that if you're outside, prohibited, why can't I do it? You're allowing them to do it.
Well, that is, we will definitely make sure that legally, we're covering everything from all ends. However, we are also taking into account the point of administration and code enforcement and...
Oh, I understand what you're saying, but so you're covering all these things. Last, I did ask an insurance company about a million-dollar liability insurance. It said $600 to $700 a year. What I was told in Montrose, up to maybe 70% of the tenants there do not carry insurance. This would be a way to make sure they carry liability insurance for the entire business, which I think would be a good thing for the city, make sure they all have insurance. So you can explore it fully, but that was interesting. I mean, that's what I was told. I can't verify it. You want a motion, though?
The comment?
Comment?
Just for the public who's hearing this but didn't read the agenda online and wants to know what we're talking about, this is primarily about those signs that you sometimes see in front of stores that announce a daily special. They're small signs. Usually, they're sort of a A-shaped sign. Sometimes, they're on a pedestal, and they're small, and they're set sort of usually against the building that say, you know, "Today's special is Bolognese Alfredo, $5.99." Right now, we don't allow those. So this is to start allowing those, but with the city telling them where they can and can't put it, so it doesn't end up in the middle of the sidewalk where people are going to bump into it, but to give some more flexibility and allow the small mom and pops to have these sort of neighborhood-scale signs. So I think it's a good thing. I support it. And someone wants to make a motion?
I'll move 8A1.
Do you have another comment?
Mr. Draymond?
Yeah, I, yeah, and the other applications of this were some of the things we were talking about some time ago about, you know, a chalkboard in front of a children's bookstore that says Storybook Hour, 11:00. Those kinds of things could now be appropriate.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers. Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Montero? Weaver?
Aye.
Ajarian?
And with that, we will start the process. Next item?
Next item, AP is Director of Community Development Regarding Scanning and Playing Division Address Files, Tentative Trackmap Files, and Environmental Information Form Files. On the agenda, it was posted as a resolution, but that was a mistake made in the report. The languages did not match. It is actually a motion to amend contract with Data Microimaging Company in the amount of $160,264.46, Mr. Mayor and Council. Again, it's listed as a resolution, is actually a motion.
Motion.
Need a discussion?
Would you like a report on this?
No, I think it's about time that we continue. I guess the thing, staff cannot possibly handle it. The files are so massive that the only way to get it done in a reasonable time to benefit the city is get it out there. So I agree.
Second. Don't have any cards?
I'll move AB1.
For a second?
Check.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers. Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Montero? Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Ajarian?
Yes. Next item?
Next item, AP is City Manager and Director of Community Development Regarding Ordinance Amending Chapter 2.28 of the Glendale Municipal Code Designating the Office and Position of Chief Assistant Director of Community Development. C1 is ordinance for introduction.
Yes.
Mr. Starburt?
My way of explanation, this is actually the last step in the process of creating the Department of Community Development. This creates the Chief Assistant Director position, and more importantly, authorizes the transition of the former Director of Redevelopment and Housing into that position.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad to introduce the ordinance at 8C1.
Okay. Thank you. The ordinance is introduced. Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next on the agenda is Oral Communications. Discussion is limited. Time is not a part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. And council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The City Manager, Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Before I call the cards, I would like to issue a, I guess, a request and reminder to all speakers that we would very much like to hear your comments on issues that are within the subject matter of the city council. I would like to try and reel us back into this side of decorum and avoid any personal attacks, personal insults. Criticize us all you want on issues, policies, decisions we've made, but let's try and keep the personal stuff out of this council meeting. There's plenty of time and ink out there on radio stations and newspapers for that sort of conjecture and speculation and commentary. I'm warned by the city attorney that I cannot cut you off, that I have to give you a little bit of leeway, but I'm going to request that we try and just keep it on point to issues, as I said, within the subject matter of the city council. First speaker is Barry Allen.
Yeah.
Barry will be followed by Robert Buniatian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly keep in mind your admonition. This has to do with the city council. It has to do with code enforcement. It has to do with all things within the jurisdiction of this body. Mr. Draymond, we've grown tired of your attempts to deflect the focus of growing evidence of public corruption that involves your special relationship with ADI and at least six of their subs. Your theater and drama of diversion has emboldened your supporters to trash the messenger and claim that you've done nothing wrong. But because you've provided no evidence to support your innocence, some of your wishful supporters are now growing wary and concerned, especially in light of the latest article in the GNP.
Bring it back home, Mr. Barry Allen.
Oh, I'm bringing it home. I'm bringing it home. That article offered new evidence of your complicity with ADI. Your continuous claim that you had no idea that ADI had any involvement is hard to believe and is now generating cynical commentary in Glendale. Today, I will offer new evidence. Mr. Draymond, you've lost much of your credibility among Glendale voters by your pronouncements of how the major renovation of your condo occurred. You claim you had no knowledge that the unlicensed primary contractor you hired to do the renovation in National Fire was involved with ADI. And, yeah, you're right. I will skip to the core of this. We have heard from Mr. Draymond that the condo association, the homeowners' association, is totally responsible for all of this maintenance of putting in windows and common area. However, we have a statement from the homeowners, the association's management company, that says the owner of 124 hired his own contractors. The HOA has nothing to do with it. Now, we have filed a request for code enforcement, and that is within this council's jurisdiction, and the city has chosen to do nothing with it. We filed a request in January, first week of January, and on January 13th, we're told it's under investigation. On January 27th, it got transferred to the Stewart Tom's office, and we filed another complaint with Sam Engel's office regarding the pictures that were shown and the fact that there were no building permits taken out for the windows, for the piping, and for the electrical, all things, and also whether there was an engineering report covering sheer walls. And this certainly is within the jurisdiction of this council. This council is certainly not doing its job, and either is the, if the city of Glendale has any trust left, it will immediately initiate an investigation of the scandal. It will include having county building inspectors open walls, ceiling, and floors to assure code compliance. All the unapproved work has been hidden by new walls and floors. We've told you about that statement from the homeowners' association's management company. Mr. Howard and Mr. Starburt, where's the equal enforcement on the building codes? You continue to be in denial about the evidence being presented to you. If you fail to equally enforce the codes now, then you are complicit in this cover-up. Mr. Draymond, by your actions, you have attempted to place yourself above the law. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Okay. John?
Before Mr. Allen leaves, he's on his way out, I see. Poor Barry. Barry, is this the best you've got? Is this really the best you've got? Let me tell you, folks, what went on in the last few days. Mr. Allen won't tell you. He tries to create a scenario where he has a statement from the management association from my condo building. He called...
He called our management association, they immediately called me. Mr. Allen called and started mentioning federal investigations, that he's investigating, that there are going to be arrests, and so on. He was trying to scare them, trying to intimidate them. They simply said, "We can't give you any information." Mr. Allen asked about the work inside my condo, the remodel I paid for. That's what they told him they had nothing to do with. He then picked up the phone and called the maintenance supervisor in our building, who then approached me. Mr. Allen and a buddy of his came out to the association and tried to pump him for information. He got nowhere and was escorted off the property. He was asking about whether or not there was really a flood of my condo, and so on. And when he was told, well, yeah, a major flood, he didn't want to hear that. And eventually, he started prying to the point where they just escorted him off the property. That's your, that's your vanguardian, folks. That's your, that's your city watchdog. That's the best you've got, Barry? See you later. Next, Richard. Robert Buniatian, followed by Lynn Myers.
My name is Robert Buniatian. I'm a resident of Glendale. With the coming elections, I ask what every voter would ask to themselves, "Who should I vote for?" It did not take me a long time to come to the conclusion that I will abstain from voting for a council member from the available candidate. I simply refuse to vote for a person that will make my life harder, harsher, or more expensive to live in. This decision is based on the economic theory and philosophy that the candidates stand for, the, the economic theory of interventionism. These interventionist policies will lead to a standard of living that is much lower than now because of three reasons. One, restrictive measures of interventionists always restrict output and the amount of goods available for consumption, and therefore lower the standard of living. Two, in the eyes of the interventionists, in this case, the existing council members and the candidates, interventionism is good intended and for the greater good. But these good-intended programs, in the long run, result in outcomes that are contrary to their stated intentions and have contributed to the destruction of capital and malinvestment of scarce resources, which lead to a lower standard of living. Of course, the politicians that implemented the interventionist policies never seem to blame themselves for the, for the lower standard of living. The contrary results always seem to be the fault of other individuals or other circumstances out of their control. Therefore, in the eyes of the interventionists and their supporters, more interventionist policies are necessary to achieve the intended results. Three, interventionism aims to confiscate the surplus of one part of the population and it giving to the other part. Once this surplus is exhausted by total confiscations, further continuation of this policy is impossible. The residents of Glendale and extended to our nation should be ready for the standard of living to be lower until they understand and reject the effects of confiscation of private property. The residents of Glendale and our nation should ready themselves for total and absolute social disorganization if total confiscation is achieved. I do not necessarily blame the politicians for lowering of our standard of living. Politicians are only a reflection of us. Until and unless the general population ceases to believe in the fallacious economic theories and philosophies that are, that are so prevalent today, the condition of lower standard of living and conflict will only increase. I ask the residents of Glendale, is your life easier, better, less expensive than ten years ago? Has conflict increased or decreased? The answer is surely no to me. Interventionism, which is the philosophy of our existing council members and the candidates that want to be council members, will only lead to you sitting in your kitchen table ten years from now and thinking about why your $100 just does not go as far as it did in 2011. I simply refuse to vote for that. And a great example of this is the, is the so-called affordable housing. Economic theory states, and it's a tourism, that if you subsidize affordable housing, all you do is shorten the supply of housing, which of course, then, people cannot afford to purchase more housing because you've essentially restricted the supply. And it is more than just that. There are many programs that, not just this council member, from this council all the way to our federal legislature, that, that implement that makes our life much more expensive. And I simply refuse to vote for any candidate that just does not understand the fundamental economic principles and makes my life harder. Thank you for your attention.
You. Lynn Myers, followed by Don Tubbs.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members and staff. My name is Lynn Myers. I was here two weeks ago to update on an old con man who had scammed people into contributing to a fund and then failed to turn over the money. I told you his name was Barry Silverman, also known as Barry Allen. Actually, Barry Silverman is just another one of the many names he has used, and his real name is something closer to Alan Silverman. As previously stated, I was one of his victims when he scammed the public for money here at this podium during a city council meeting and in his rag vanguard. I feel it is incumbent upon me to return here just as often as he does, to remind the people of this city that he is not trustworthy, not by any stretch of the imagination, and to warn everyone to be on guard and beware of this old con man and his handful of puppets. Which brings me to the Glendale news press, who, in their desire for a big story and recognition, pulled trash from his rag and hoped that somehow they could spin this trash into a story and emulate the success of the LA Times reporters who broke the Bell story. Attempting to tie ADI and Mr. Drayman's condo work fell completely flat, but their obsession for a big story has never ended, and in their desperation to push the story forward, there have been major lapses in journalistic standards and ethics. All reasoning has been thrown aside, and this obsession for a story to rival Bell has resulted in misleading and inaccurate articles and innuendo to the point of embarrassment. Their latest story, ADI Manager Tied to Drayman Remodel, is just as flat as the others and should never have been printed. Their attempts to connect Mr. Drayman to ADI's alleged defrauding of the city by saying that the contractor who did part of the rehab in his condo caused by flooding hired someone who worked for ADI is simply over the top. This person coordinated great grout colors, et cetera, and was paid for her work. Attempting to smear Mr. Drayman's name prior to the election will backfire, and at some point, they are going to end up with egg all over their face. There is no story here, and the news press knows that. It is time to give it up and move on because their credibility is at stake. If the Glendale news press is looking for a story, they need look no further than the old con man himself, Barry Allen. And I would suggest to them that Oakland County, Michigan is the place to start. Thank you.
You, Don Tubbs, followed by Hazel Ken, Ken, you know, Catnall.
Honorable Mayor Najarian, City Council members, Mr. Starbert and city staff. My name is Don Tubbs, resident of Glendale. It's been a while since I've been here to speak on issues concerning our city, mainly because I feel the current city council and staff are doing a very fine job of running this great city. I'm here tonight to speak out against the Glendale news press and their ridiculous allegations about John Drayman's alleged association with ADI, as published in last Thursday's paper and other preceding papers. Good God, how is it that an employee of one of ADI's contractors hired by John's contractor without John's knowledge of the employee's affiliation with the ADI and hired only to coordinate paint colors, tile grout, food, floor samples for John have anything to do with John's association with ADI and they're bilking millions of dollars from Glendale? This is simply ridiculously wrong journalistic ethics and is totally irresponsible. Thank goodness that in the far north part of Glendale, where I live, we have the CV Weekly newspaper that prints the facts about, and without bias. To me, it is clear that the news press has an agenda and are, and are going after John by overstepping honest journalism and distorting the facts. In this last Saturday's news press, it stated, and I quote, "The news press will not issue endorsements in the city council race this year because we're not going to push a product we ourselves wouldn't buy." Well, I know how to check on a product. I look into its history on quality, capabilities, and reliability. And in this case, just check out John's record on his accomplishments, his integrity over the past four years in, in this city council, and you'll know what I mean. Thank you.
You. Hazel Catmull, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council people. It's time the City Council ensure that all city departments accept fiscal responsibility for their budget. If the city, city staff is indeed in charge of city projects, let them present a viable budget, not one that relies on overruns to complete the project. Negotiate with the unions over wage increases and compensation packages. Examine the pension scale. There are very hard times ahead, and this is the time that we should be looking at all this. I think you all do a great job. We elected you to do this. Please do it. And Mr. Drayman, you've had some shining moments in Glendale. Outing Mike Mohill was not one of them. You both lost something. You for telling, he for being. Thank you.
Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members and the public. Restoring the public trust. The public has witnessed for the past ten years, the council's need to continue to pass additional fees for trash, water, electricity, permits, and impact fees, on and on. At every corner, staff comes before the council and recommends increases in fees and utility rates to support a growing budget and bloated budget. This approach for managing our city has impacted our quality of life. We must find better ways to manage our city. A city budget of over $800 million is not acceptable. A city debt of hundreds of million dollars is still not acceptable. And city pension obligations of over $1 billion, folks, is certainly not acceptable either. We must make tough decisions. Our problems are not on the revenue side of the budget, but on the expense side. City departments must take serious steps in looking for ways to reduce expenses. The number of city managers at all levels must be reduced. We need more Indians and fewer chiefs to operate our city. $16 million in workman compensation claims can no longer be acceptable. Either is overtime pay, it needs to be controlled as well. The billions of dollars in pension obligations must be addressed immediately and not be kicked down the road as the current council has been doing. We must advise the unions, we must change their pension promises, or the city will have to consider outsourcing of their jobs. By reducing the city pension obligations, we should be able to restore affordable electricity and water rates and stop current and future budget deficits. Restore our focus on infrastructure, roads, water lines, sewer, open space for parks, and especially for soccer fields. We are looking for compromise and not confrontation with city personnel. Our interest should always be what is best for the stakeholders of the city. A city government that is willing to overcharge residents on the most basic city services like water and electricity, and who is also willing to overcharge schools, is a government we need to change. The disconnect between the government and the citizens must be addressed by bringing the People's Hour at City Council to every Tuesday night at 7:00 PM. By having the People's Hour at a set time, it is more likely to encourage citizens' participation. The city, the population is over 200,000, and we have a very diversified culture with many different business interests. The present system is broken, and we need to explore the concept of council districts. With an independent mayor voted upon by all the voters, rather than the current system of a rotated individual appointed by the council members themselves. By having the People's Hour set at 7:00 PM and the concept of council districts with an elected mayor, the citizens of Glendale will feel a part of the solution for this jewel city, rather than its problem. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill, candidate for Glendale City Council.
Mr. Mayor, nice campaign speech. Right?
Since I still have another minute and fifteen seconds, may I continue speaking?
I guess so.
I have a total of five minutes to speak on any subject matter I like. And, this is called the First Amendment. I do not question what my elected officials talk about every Tuesday night. Should I choose and others choose to speak on any subject matter, it's the law, it's our, our, our rights as citizens. You may not like what we're saying, and we may not like what you like and disagree with you, but we should always respect each other's and their viewpoints. I never say nasty words to anybody, and I hope I don't get any nasty remarks from anybody else. This is a public forum. I expect my public official to be always respectful of me and anybody else. That's why we need the People's Hour to be stored back to 7:00, so everybody in the community can know what's going on. The present system forces the council critics to speak at 8, 9, and 10:00 at night, when the good folks have gone to bed. Let's hope this changes. Thank you again.
Herbert Milano.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, what time is it?
7:23.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. In a minute or so, I will be displaying a PowerPoint on some of the trends that I have been able to compile for the past ten years. That information that will be displayed is information that we can find on the Internet from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Reports. I generally buy these reports every year, sometimes I also buy the budget. When the information is not available, I file a California Public Records Act. One of those reports that I requested was the IRS Form 941, the quarterly reports, who basically tells us the number of employees and the, the total payroll on a quarterly basis. Sometimes when that information is insufficient, I file a California Public Records Act. For example, I have here the listing of all of the city's employees and their corresponding salaries for the year 2010. I took the liberty of taking all this information and put it on a spreadsheet and handed it to, to you, Mayor, so that you can assess for every page that is here, there's a recorded column in that particular document. The reason why I had to go through this extent is that I made a request for a W-3, which is the summary to the IRS, but I was told that I needed to wait until April, the, the extension allowed by the IRS for the city to file its, its payroll returns. So, I would like to, if I may, show you this, these very short and brief graphs and documents concerning what I've compiled for the past ten years. This is the Glendale government's salary and wage trends between the years 2000 and the year 2010, reported on the IRS W-3, except for the last year, which comes from these documents that I just showed you. documents that I just showed you. If you can go to the next slide, please. So here you have the Glendale wages and deferred wages for the past 10 years. The last number for the year 2010 is close to $169 million. As you can see, there is no blue section because this report does not provide me with a deferred compensation. That is the total as it appears from these documents that I requested from the city. What it shows is that during the time that the citizens of Glendale and the stakeholders have had a significant hard time with unemployment, with increases in the electricity rates and water rates, we have seen that, as far as the Glendale payroll, it has never ceased to increase. In some cases, a significant amount, well over 60%. Next slide, please. So now that the census is completed, I'm able to go to the census and be able to obtain some information, also from the Department of Labor. Inflation rate for the past 10 years was 26.6%. The population of Glendale grew by one-half of 1%. If you combine those two, the combined population and inflation will become close to 28%. This would be sort of like the justifiable increase in our payroll and our expenses. But our payroll increase actually went up 80%. Our pension expense, 183%, and our medical insurance expenditures, 450. Now, this is just a selection of what has transpired with the expenses in the city of Glendale. Next slide, please. Total employment, according to the forms that I showed you earlier, is 2,174. It actually was twice during the quarterly reports that I showed us that number. Total employees over 100,647 employees, nearly 30% of that number. Total payroll for 2010, $169 million. Payroll for the, what I call the $100,000 club, 88 million. They make up more than 50% of the total payroll. The question for me is, how come we don't get to see information with this level of clarity during the years past? We see oftentimes a snapshot of what has transpired, but we don't get to see the trends that highlight where it is that we have been going. Even though the budget is being impacted by the economy, I don't believe that it has impacted it as much as it has based upon the figures that I showed you earlier. A significant increase in the payroll, a huge increase in the pension obligations and the pension payments that are being made, huge increases in the medical insurance payments that the citizens are paying, and of course, many other expenses that are not being brought up. I think this is the other side we must all hear. Thank you very much.
You. Do you have any response at this point?
No, just seeing the numbers, I don't have a response. What we tend to see from Mr. Milano, however, is one piece of the picture, and not the whole picture. I'll just take some of those comments that have been brought to you here this evening, that he has shown you graphs on before. For example, the over $1 billion in retirement obligations. He's used the number of 1.2, 1.3 billion. He fails to say that we have $1 billion, 1.1 billion in assets at pers in our own account for the cost of our employees. The figures that tie growth in budget to population increase, frankly, that's no basis to determine increases in cost of budgets. I haven't seen these numbers before. They're new to me this evening, and we'll look at them as well. But over a 10-year period of time, to think there could be a considerable increase in cost of health insurance, no question about it. We've been lucky to try and keep that below double digits every year. The loss of value in pers and rising cost of pers costs, no question about it. Over a decade, those costs have risen dramatically. The total number of salaries that he continues to quote does not take into consideration either the addition or reduction of additional personnel, because they track total wages, so they don't adjust to get back to a fair comparison on actual costs. However, even noting in a 10-year period of time, the inflation cost for safety salaries is a good example. Those costs have gone up appreciably in the last 10 years. In the last several years, though, since the downturn, my guess is that those costs have leveled out dramatically. So frankly, a number of these numbers don't surprise me. Costs have gone up appreciably in the last 10 years, and you'll find that Glendale, compared to other cities in the state, has achieved to try and stay at about the average. And I will say that in the last several years, you'll find that we have done a very responsible job of attempting to cap and limit the costs that Mr. Milano has referenced. Beyond that, I can't speak to the numbers, so I haven't seen them before.
Lorraine Mohill. Pass. Charles Hooker.
Mayor, city councilman, my name is Charles Hooker, native of Glendale. I want to ask you to please vote in April. We voted to replace a couple of men who were on the city council before. Why would we want to put them back in office when they do not attend council meetings? I expect someone who is running and to be, and for a council seat, to come to the council meetings and attend meetings like everybody else does, council people. If they're really interested, they would attend the meetings. Candidates running for office have been bringing their brothers, sisters, and their entourage to speak before the council. Why do we need this? If this was not an election year, do you think we would see any of these people here? I have had water damage at my house when we had the two freeway problem, the collapse on it, and my insurance company took care of the majority, except for my deduction that I had to pay. And I cannot understand what all of the problem is that's going on with this rebuilding or redoing of Mr. Draymond's condominium. If the insurance is taking care of it, why is anybody else worried about it? Thank you.
You. Sharon Thompson, followed by Robert Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, and citizens. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of you, the council people, Fire Department, and the Police Department for doing a good job in these tough times. It's tough for everyone. Tonight is another attempt to smear Mr. Draymond's reputation by such persons as Mr. Barry Allen Silverman and his Vanguard tabloid remarks. His various, probably illegally obtained pictures of Mr. Draymond's condo do not show or prove any wrongdoing of construction or permits in partially remodeling his home after his condo flood. This information has been proven true by Mr. Scott Howard and Mr. Starbird in a previous council meeting. All legal requirements for the work done have been met. The photographs that he usually brings, but didn't bring tonight, have, and wondering how they were obtained are another matter. There is a legal question of how they were taken and by whom. Also in question is how Mr. Silverman received them and why. Was it a disgruntled unpaid subcontractor, or perhaps an associate of Mr. Allen who trespassed to take those pictures, which he keeps bringing to council meetings week after week? What is his motive? It's obvious, to discredit and disgrace Mr. Draymond, especially during this volatile election campaign. Mr. Allen has been previously challenged by Mr. Draymond and other council members as to his ethics and accuracy of many of his statements in this very chamber. He claims he's looking for accountability and truth and transparency, but doesn't even practice what he preaches. Yet when asked for accountability of the defense fund for which my husband and myself, he refuses. He claims he has answered this many times before and does not wish to go into it any further. This is not an answer. In the words of another speaker, he is a con man. He is a con man. No person should rely on Mr. Allen's information to prove Mr. Draymond's guilty of any wrongdoing. His accusations are based on hearsay, lies, and biased opinions by his group of weekly writers in a lame attempt to unfold a bail-type situation. This is an inquirer type of journalism, somewhat like the news press reporting of late. Don't be fooled by the rhetoric by Dan Evans or the Glendale News Press or Barry Allen Silverman. The truth is always what prevails, and the truth is, Mr. Draymond has done nothing unlawful. He deserves our support. Thank you, Mr. Draymond.
Robert Thompson. Followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, councilmembers, and the public. My name is Robert Thompson. Here we go again with irresponsible, untrue, and distorted reporting by Melanie Hicken of the Glendale News Press, under the direction of her editor, Dan Evans, yet another attempt to disgrace, discredit, and challenge the integrity, honesty, and character of John Draymond. As part of renovations of Mr. Draymond's condo, his contracted contractor contacted Ms. Beth Navarette, a design consultant he had used many times before, to assist in tile colors, finishes, and grout choices. Ms. Navarette spoke to Mr. Draymond several times about these choices and was later paid for her services. According to the news press, Ms. Navarette is employed by a construction firm who is linked to ADI. I guess by discussing color choices and tile styles with Ms. Navarette, Mr. Draymond is automatically involved with fraud, deception, and unlawful activities with ADI. This is more, just nothing more than vindictive, mean-spirited, and just outright lies by Dan Evans and Melanie Hicken. In this country, a person is innocent until proven guilty. But the news press editor, Dan Evans, and his puppet reporter, Melanie Hicken, have become judge and jury regarding Mr. Draymond's activities. They have alleged he's a crook, using rumor, innuendo, and half-truths as their proof. They are using the power of the press to discredit Mr. Draymond in order to affect the council race outcome. Mr. Evans and Ms. Hicken are turning the news press into a tabloid rag, rather than conducting objective and factual reporting. Their superiors should be concerned. Mr. Draymond is not under any investigations of any law enforcement agency for any reason, federal, state, or local. No investigations. Also, there are no investigations or penalties for any infractions of permits and other requirements by the city of Glendale. None. And yet, Mr. Evans continues to try to create a story by acquiring so-called facts by such outstanding, upstanding individuals as Barry Allen Silverman and Vanguard Publication, and of course, Mike Mohill, questionable candidate for city council. Melanie Hicken and Dan Evans are using selective journalism when reporting, conveniently leaving out pertinent facts or reporting false information on purpose in headline form, and then make a retraction located in an obscure back part of the newspaper. This tactic is an old newspaper stunt. Most people remember headlines, but few remember retractions. Mr. Mohill blatantly lied in the forum section of the news press regarding Mr. Draymond's non-payment to subcontractors and meeting and closed session with ADI. Mr. Evans knew full well this was a lie, but printed it anyway, and then a day later, made a retraction in the back pages of the newspaper. Where are his journalistic ethics? It's time for the public to be aware of the smear campaign against John Draymond, being waged by Dan Evans, and reporter Melanie Hicken. In conclusion, Mr. Evans should take note of real ethical reporting, such as practiced by Crescent Valley Weekly Newspaper, who actually just reports the facts and leaves conclusions to the readers. I know I speak for the majority when I say, "Mr. Draymond, we are appreciative of your work for our community, and we are not fooled by all of this deception and disgraceful lack of ethics by the Glendale News Press led by Dan Evans and Melanie Hicken." Thank you.
Margaret Hammond.
My name is Margaret Hammond, mayor, and members of the council staff and audience. I just read in the news press, I guess yesterday or the day before, about a survey on depression. And the outcome was that the citizens, one of the outcomes was that the citizens of Burbank and Glendale were amongst the most depressed of the survey, of the survey taken. I am asking why? Could it be because of the quality of the candidates that are running for the election for city council? We have one candidate who took advantage of the trust of citizens of Glendale, who wanted to finance the city's pride in having a float in the Rose Parade. He used the funds not just to pay for the float, partially, but used the funds as he saw fit, including financing the Miss Asia contest. Another candidate, who while he was on the city council four years ago, did not recuse himself for when he should have, and he was, even though he was a financial advisor to one of the people that was involved in the city action regarding an improper use of property on Glen Oaks. And then even had an ordinance passed whereby he gave back the people $10,000. He was allowed to sit on the Airport Commission, even though the vote was screwed up, because he was a friend of the mayor. And citizens protested that appointment at the time, to no avail. Third, we have another one who was a police employee candidate, who was a candidate, and he committed an offense of waving a gun at his wife and son, and was paid over $100,000 a year while he was on administrative leave. We have another candidate who has serious ethic issues in his personal life, and yet he points his finger at other candidates continually. We have yet another candidate who is a religious zealot and appears to have no knowledge of how the city business is supposed to be conducted, past or present. Final candidate is facing possible charges of financial irregularities in his personal life, but then he shares that stigma with the sitting, sitting council. No wonder we're depressed. Where do we go from here? So many people calling me and stopping me wherever I go and saying, "Who do we vote for? What can we do?" And they're very upset, even saying, "I'm not even going to vote. There's nobody to vote for." Don't do that. Vote. Vote for the best of the worst, in other words, but make sure you vote on April the 5th. There are other important issues, such as, I call it, the bond issue, IS, which will, if it is passed, will last almost 50 years in paying it off, according to something we heard last night from the Education Department, ah, I'm sorry, Greg Kukorian. Anyway, the local school board have candidates running also, and the college candidates who are running happen to be on the back page of the ballot. So make sure you look on that back page of the ballot and vote for, there are good people running that have been, that are incumbents, and they are running again. Now, I want to know one more thing. Is the city going to allow the late absentee voters again to vote whenever they want, pass the allowable or legal time of the cutoff, which is on the day, I think it's, is at 8:00 on the day of the election? So all I'm saying is, we have a lot of people that are very upset about what's going on in the city. They're very disillusioned and very upset. And all I can say is, remember, city of Glendale is a good city to live is a good city to live in, and it's unfortunate that we're going through this time right now, but just think of our quality of life that we do have in the city. I know I myself was very depressed with all the looking and listening to some of the stuff going on, but we have to look and what a, just think what a beautiful day we had today. It may rain again, and we may have more storms and more whatever happens during those storms, but we are going to get good weather again, so, and our city will prosper. Thank you.
Thank you. Karam Rayad.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Mayor, I'm here to defend Mr. Drayman. Just recently, the attack from a cheap newspaper tried to boost their sales, and they coming up with three weeks before the election. It's kind of the old, dirty political maneuver. So, I've been in Glendale 30 years.
Hi, Marty.
I've been in Glendale 30 years, and I would say Mr. Drayman was the best city council we ever had. I didn't know him before he came as a city council, and I never met him before, but when I have a problem and I ask for help, he did step in and take care of the problem. Just to say is, Mr. John, you will be back. We will vote for you. As a citizen of that great city of Glendale, we all vote for you. Mark my word, I'll be back after April the 5th to say, "Mr. Drayman, welcome back. Congratulations." Thank you.
Patricia Marsh, followed by Michael Morgan.
Mayor of Grendel County, council members, staff. My name's Patricia Marsh. Been a resident of Glendale for 50-some years. Several years ago, I collected hundreds of signatures from the community to get the Glendale News Press back in the home delivery of the Los Angeles Times in the La Crisana area. I have to say that today I would not do the same, based on, I now have a paper that's based on innuendo and facts or information, false information provided by Barry Allen Silverman. I would like the newspaper of several years ago back. I would like to read well researched and accurate articles once again, articles free of political bias and the paper's own agenda. A newspaper is supposed to report news, not create it, and I disagree with their agenda. Thank you.
Michael Morgan, followed by Bill Weissman.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Starbird, staff. My name is Mike Morgan, and I'm checking in, and it's 7:50 right at the moment, just to let anybody know, and the last time I spoke, which I guess was last week, it was 7:15 when I spoke, so I think I'm within the time period that Mr. Mohill was referring to. Good evening, Glendale. For those of you who witnessed last week's oral communication, it was quite a show. What was missed through all of last week's family gathering was not the issue of straight or gay, or being outed or not. No one should care if you are straight or gay, but they should care if you uphold and abide by the law, if transparency only applies to some and not to others. That candidate had many chances to set the record straight, but chose not to. An arrest is an important fact to let the electorate know. All the while, he was accusing others of corruption and malfeasance. Which brings me to the larger picture, the sad demise of our local paper, the Glendale News Press, which should have investigated and broken that story. In an editorial last week, the Glendale News Press says "None of the above" about our council candidates, stating, "Employee pension costs are set to skyrocket. State budget decisions could have drastically impacted our city services. Downtown Glendale is posed for a major revamp." Who cares? To the GNP editors, the answer is, "We do." The citizens of Glendale. At every forum, the candidates have been asked these very questions, and some have given very straight, candid, thoughtful, and concise answers, but you wouldn't know it by reading the Glendale News Press. What has the Glendale News Press been doing? Reporting about faxes concerning grout colors, paint chips, tile coordination, hoping against hope that it will somehow make a story, reporting on a candidate's sexual orientation rather than his arrest record, or another's long-ago bankruptcy. In this regard, who does care? We care about a paper that actually reports the news, not sensationalize it or manufacture it. The Glendale News Press states that the big picture in the campaign has been about dragging skeletons from the closet, not at the forums I have been to. Anti-skeletons being drawn from the closet were the questions asked by the audience and not heard, obviously, by the Glendale News Press. I watched couples come to the forum and actually rate candidates as to content and knowledge and left as informed voters, something the Glendale News Press should have accomplished. The Glendale News Press takes their editorial stance reminiscent of being in a grade school. When one person acts up and one person only, the rest of the class gets blamed and grounded. The Glendale News Press was formerly the stanchion of good, moral, and ethical journalism to the community. It has allowed itself to become trivial and minutia-driven in its reporting of Glendale events. The city of Glendale deserves to have a community paper again, one that is responsible and part of the community, and not the half-tabloid, half-block that it has become. I urge you, Glendale citizens, to make an informed choice, something the Glendale News Press is editorially unable or incapable to do. I ask you, Glendale, to know your candidates, and Glendale, please vote April 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Weissman, followed by Mike Labutsky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff and the public. My name is Bill Weissman, Far North Glendale. I actually originally didn't have plans to come down and speak about this, although it has been disturbing me for some while now, but I have to say, the Glendale News Press, none of the above endorsement. As a lifetime subscriber to the LA Times, I'm disappointed in our local community newspaper. The non-endorsement that they printed called this election a farce, and I think to a large extent, they're right. This election has become a farce, and it is largely because of what they have done. When the articles and editorials came out earlier about these dire warnings that the city was being bilked of millions of dollars, you know, we essentially had to take the word of the news press that they had information that said that, and then they actually published the memos from Mike Fortney that were the supposed smoking gun for all of this. I read those memos very carefully. I spent about 10 days reading those memos, making sure I understood what they said, and then I expressed my concerns to Dan Evans, saying, you know, "What you say is in these memos isn't in these memos. I don't see these dire warnings about the city being bilked out of millions of dollars. It's just not there." And Dan Evans invited me personally. He said, "Please, write a letter to the editor. Send it in. We'll publish it. We want your, you know, we want to air your concerns." Silly me, I believed it. I actually spent a couple days carefully composing a letter, editing it over and over again, referring, you know, to the source material to make sure that I got everything right. I sent that letter in, and Dan Evans refused to print it. He accused me of all kinds of, you know, misdirection and malfeasance and this, that, and the other, and, you know, I just didn't see it. And since he invited me to submit the letter and then refused to print the letter that I submitted, things have kind of gone downhill since then, because it's obvious the management, at least, of the Glendale News Press is trying to gin up a city-of-bell-type scandal here, and they are getting zero traction, and that's obviously very frustrating to somebody. I mean, look what they've done regarding their own policies. The news press had a policy that there were not going to be political ads on the forum page, and we've had so far not one, but at least two that I know of, political ads on the forum page. And, you know, after coming out and apologizing for having done it wrong the first time. The news press also has a policy that letters to the editor have to be fact-checked, and as several other speakers have mentioned, a letter to the editor from a candidate for city council containing several bald-faced lies was printed, and then the tiny correction, you know, buried on page A4 the next day. It's disappointing, like I say, and I will disagree somewhat with what Mr. Thompson said. I think the GNP does have great staff. I think they have good reporters. I think they have a good editor. I think what they really need is a new publisher, and that's what I'm here to advocate tonight. And since I have a little bit of time left, I'm sorry, Mr. Mohill Sofit, who I've not stayed till the end, I just had a rhetorical question for Mr. Mohill, so I'm going to speak to him as if he were here. Mr. Mohill, if I suspect that there's something illegal going on in your house, is it okay for me to go into your house when you're not there without your permission and take pictures of everything I see and then display those pictures in a public manner? If you don't think that's okay to be done to you, Mr. Mohill, I'd like to hear why you think it was okay that Barry Allen did that to John Drayman. Thank you.
Mike Labutsky.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Labutsky. I used to live in the city of Glendale for 15 years, despite the fact that my boss, after hearing about my serious harassment and abuse for three years, was advising me to move. Anyway, today I would like to talk a little bit about Armenian genocide again. It's such a sad subject, and unfortunately, it's being misused. But I would like to first refer to what I was talking about last time, and this is the place where I was placed after being kidnapped by the Glendale Police, and that was on October 21st, after reporting to the watch commander that I've been abused by the Glendale Police Officer in presence of witnesses, who was on drugs. My free speech rights were abused, my religious rights were abused. I was scared. How do you govern this city when your residents are scared of the government? Is that United States of America? Is that free democracy where people have a born right to live without fear? Now, as I showed you last time, Glendale Adventist Medical Center, first, I would like, because I think it was referred to that, I would like to tell everybody in Glendale that Glendale Adventist Medical Center has a very misleading name. I talked to the pastor at the Adventist Center, and he assured me that the hospital was sold to the private hands many, many years ago. Therefore, the Church of Adventist does not have any responsibilities for the crimes committed in that hospital. And I believe that the Adventist Church should request, especially after the Angel of Death case, to change the name of the hospital, because it is, has religious connotations, and it's a horrible concentration and extermination camps, camp. Here we go. That's what I showed you last time. This is cigarettes with the warning, "Smoking kills." Now here, I have an article which says that the Surgeon General, Dr. Regina Benjamin, recently announced that smoking one cigarette can kill you. Now, I was being given officially nine a day, but as a matter of fact, if asked, I would get 18 of them, and because we shared cigarettes, because everybody was so eager to smoke, I was smoking 27, maybe 30 cigarettes. Some people were smoking 60. Now, in addition to that, I was injected with drugs, and among them is lozepine, and lozepine is habit-forming and shouldn't never be, should never be prescribed for somebody who has addiction. So not only I was served with cigarettes, I was injected with poison to make sure that I never get out of the addiction. So the Dr. Kaliko of Glendale Adventist Medical Center sent me on the suicide trip to death. Now you, as a city council, should investigate this, because if you don't, it may look like you kind of not doing anything in the face of death of many people, including a lot of Armenian people that are in that hospital, and they think that they're in good hands, religious hands, when they're being killed, as documented by Angel of Death. But how many Angels of Death are really there? Dr. Kaliko is the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Labutsky.
Thank you very much. You have a good evening.
I don't have any other cards. Mr. Weaver.
I'll wait. I said at the beginning of tonight's meeting that this is the dirtiest campaign that I've ever been in. I've heard that from others, and I believe it. And I believe in the first amendment rights of any person to come up here and say anything, even accuse me of murder. That was done one time, a long time ago. But getting up here and telling lies, something else. Margaret, you got up here and you told bold-faced lies about me. If you have one shred of evidence to prove what you accuse me of, I'll tell you the same thing I've told others that got up here and did hits on me. Present your facts to the district attorney, the city attorney. I don't care, but back up your facts. Instead of just listening to people tell you things, you write them down, and you come up here and say it. I say you lied to me. You prove otherwise, or otherwise, don't say it. That's what makes a dirty campaign. When I'm out there and I try to get people to run for council, what do they do? They laugh at me. You gotta be kidding, Dave. Why would I want to sit there and be subject to the kind of comments you get thrown at you at the diocese and in the paper? And what can I say to them? Nothing, because you and some of the others out here contribute to the reason why people don't want to serve this community. That's a shame.
Ms. Friedman.
Well, I did want to respond to one thing that was implied by Mr. Allen and friends. There's certainly a lot that they say that I don't agree with, but there's one thing that I do think that the diocese should answer, which is the assertion that the city is somehow protecting Mr. Drayman or subjecting him to a different standard than they would subject an ordinary citizen to in terms of his home remodel. So I would like to ask the city attorney whether that's the case, whether we're, whether Mr. Drayman has done something wrong that we're giving him a pass on, or whether he's being asked to follow the same rules as everybody else in Glendale.
Mr. Mayor, council members, council member Friedman, we don't have a case in our office involving Mr. Drayman, as I understand it.
I'm referring to the building, the photograph- I'm referring to the building, the photographs, the building code issues, all of that sort of stuff.
Like I said, we have no case in our office. We understand that permits were applied for, and the appropriate fees were paid, and the matter is being handled consistent with normal practice by code, or by neighborhood services.
That's been my understanding too, and I just want to clear that up, that Mr. Drayman is going through the same process that every citizen goes through in terms of the remodel and in terms of permitting. We do occasionally have residents who don't get everything permitted, and they go through a certain process, and that's the way it works. And I don't know the specifics of Mr. Drayman's case, but I have not heard any indication from anyone at the city that there's any cover-up or anything being done incorrectly on, on his, in terms of his remodel. And if there was, I think this council would be interested. So that's my answer to that.
Mr. Drayman?
Where does one begin, Mr. Mayor? Certainly know it's election season. I don't have a lot of comments to make, but a couple, I'd like to, actually, I seldom answer Mr. Hooker, but I would like to, because I think he asked a great question. He mentioned that he, I don't know his current home, but at some point, he said he had a flood in, in his home, and his insurance company took care of everything. Well, the flood wasn't in my home, Mr. Hooker, it was in another resident's home, and it took place inside a wall, and it was a common, I live in a condominium, not a, a single-family home, and the homeowners association is on the hook for that, for the damage caused by that. Their insurance company took care of their portion of it, and I paid for the rest. And that's the bottom line of it. There just isn't anything more to it, except for it's election season. And Mr. Allen is literally throwing everything in the kitchen sink at me to, between, and you heard him tonight. I'll be back next, see you next week, Mr. Drayman. That was his, what, he mentioned theatrics. That's what they call in the business, a rave-off, someone who makes an outlandish comment as they go out the door. And that's, you know, so we, and sometimes people call it kabuki theater. Here in America, we call it burlesque. That's what Mr. Mr. Allen is. Where the burlesque becomes the surreal is when the newspaper uses Mr. Allen and starts to buy into this nonsense. And I do have to say, I, I did not miss what the newspaper was attempting to do with their article. They wrote a headline in typeface so bold, you would have thought the Japanese had attacked Pearl Harbor again. And the content of the article had nothing to do with the headline. First sentence in that article should tell any thinking person what they were trying to do. Contractor hired a woman, do some work, it had to do with coordinating finishes. She apparently faxed one of the subcontractors from her office, and they tie that to the bilking of the city of Glendale, millions of dollars, supposedly documents show. Documents have nothing to do with me, they don't mention that, and the bilking of Glendale, assuming that happened, to the tune of millions of dollars, also had nothing to do with me, but they don't mention that. They love it. They ran it just ahead of the election. And I'll bet you something else, they're going to do it again, right before the election. And, you know, whether they have assistance, I don't know, but that's what they're doing. And it's a concerted effort. Was it a surprise they endorsed no one? Absolutely not. We almost had a betting pool here about it. We pretty much knew about it, and everybody in the audience is nodding, because we all know people that work there. We all know, we all hear things from people that work there. We know exactly what was going on. Lastly, I guess I should address this one last point, and that's this issue that, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the speaker's name, I, but she, she's been here very quietly and nicely observing us for some time. She's only spoken a couple of times. Spoke tonight about me revealing something about Mr. Mohill. I never revealed nothing about Mr. Mohill, not one single word, except the fact that he had a criminal record. That's it. And see, no one cares about his personal life, and that's just the point, but he raised the issue of character and judgment. And what he doesn't like is, is the fact that the public has a right to know about that. Three convictions in his background. And, and they're only of relevance in, as far as I'm concerned, because he's running for public office, and he acts as though these were youthful indiscretions from long ago. He was a middle-aged man at the time, not a teenager, not a twenty-year-old. He was in his, he was in his forties, my goodness. He also tries to trivialize them as misdemeanors, minimize their significance. So let me tell you, reckless driving's a misdemeanor. You know, driving under the influence is a misdemeanor. If those were in a council candidate's background, would you want to know about it before you cast a vote? Especially when that council candidate has made it his practice for the last number of months at this podium, pointing his finger at everybody else up here, myself included, talking about our judgment and our character and our ethics? I just don't understand how he figures he gets a pass. That's what's astounding to me. And the third conviction was not long ago. It was five years ago. And what was that? Again, judgment. He trivializes it as a spat with his neighbor. What actually occurred was, he had a disagreement with his neighbor about an item related to the neighbor's tree. And so when the neighbor wasn't home, he trespassed onto that neighbor's property, took matters into his own hands, hacked up their, their protected oak tree, and now wants to, he got convicted. And now he wants to call it a spat with his neighbor. I don't think they considered a spat. So there again, it goes to judgment. I didn't raise the issue of judgment, he did. And coming full circle to our friends at the Glendale News Press, they know that full well too. They know I've been sitting here for months and months and months, taking it and taking it and taking it. I raised the issue of this hypocrisy, and suddenly, we're both wallowing in the mud, so they claim. And I'll leave you with this last little example, which is trivial, perhaps, but it is so emblematic of what this paper is trying to do. We showed a photograph that was used in that particular trespass case, that was used as evidence to make that conviction. And it's a photograph of Mr. Mohill standing with a tree saw in his hands, cutting off the limb of his neighbor's tree. How did the news press write about it? That a photograph was shown of Mr. Mohill standing near his neighbor's tree? Yes, he was, with a tree saw in his hand, sawing the limb off. If you can't get that right, if you can't get the most basic minimal things right, there's a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Someone please move to adjourn this meeting. So moved. Adjourned.